President Weir, Dr. Presley, members of the board, I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an update on the Round Rock ISD Police Department. And as we all know, this has been a challenging time for our students, for this district, for our board, the state, this country, this world. And the Round Rock ISD Police Department has not been immune from those challenges. But we're very proud of the work that we're doing during these challenging times to create a police department that we truly believe will be a model for school policing across this country. As you know, the board in February of 2020 signed a resolution to form the police department, and I was very blessed to be hired as the police chief in August of 2020. And that gave us 10 months to form a police department to ensure that we had sufficient staffing, sufficient staffing, and that we had systems in place to make sure that we could provide the highest quality of safety and security response to our students holistically. And we were, our goal, we were tasked with doing that before our law enforcement partners ended their participation in the SRO program, which will occur in a couple of months, in June 2020. And my goal with this presentation is to provide you information on what we've done and what we're in the process of completing as we continue to create a career law enforcement agency. Let's see, I can't see the slides. All right, I think I got some. Okay.
Chief, I don't think, or wait, are they up?
I didn't see them, but that's okay. I can go with, I can go with this paper one.
Here, I'll put the slides up. Give me one second to see if they'll be here. Are we good?
Yes. All right. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So what this slide is, is what we believe to be, again, very important pillars for a successful school policing agency. So what we have here are the four pillars of Round Rock ISD Police Department, and that includes safety and security, equity, behavioral health, and student advocacy. And I will let Assistant Chief Willoughby speak on the safety and security pillar.
Good afternoon. I'm going to talk about the safety and security pillar of the Round Rock ISD Police Department. When it comes to safety and security, we have the responsibility to prevent, respond to, and address critical incidents or crises occurring outside or around our campuses. There may be situations that occur, that occur from, away from our campuses, but also affect our campus. Our officers are trained to assess, address, respond to these situations in a manner that provides the highest level of safety and security to our students, staff, and visitors. I have an example of that that I wanted to share with you. Recently, we got a 911 call that there was somebody with an assault rifle walking around one of our campuses. Our officers responded along with Chief and I, and our partners of the local agency responded. We were able to locate the subject with the assault rifle, speak with that subject, and assess where we are or where we were with that subject. It turned out that he was legally carrying that assault rifle around our campus. He wasn't on campus, but just adjacent to it. And we were able to assess, talk to him, and figure out that, we didn't believe it to be a threat at that point, but we didn't have anything legally we could do. We couldn't remove him, couldn't, couldn't do anything with that as far as criminal, it wasn't a criminal act. So what we did was our, our partner agencies had to go back in service and respond to their, their districts. Our officers stood by at the campus. We set up what I'll call a perimeter around the campus and to provide, provide the safety and security for our students and staff. We had multiple officers around the area and keeping eyes on the subject to make sure there wasn't an issue. As it turned out, the subject left the scene, and there was no, no issue. So what we did was we gave, we basically gave a sense of security and safety to that staff. They were very grateful that we were there and providing safety for them. Our safety and security also includes responding to law enforcement-related issues that occur inside the school. We have well-trained officers to respond to any critical incident that happens inside the school. Our officers are also trained in standard response protocols so that they can assist staff of the school with any drills that are conducted to make sure that they are done by best practices. And lastly, our officers are trained to understand that safety and security also includes protecting students from self-harm. We'll speak about that in just a minute with Dr. Grasso. But we build relationships with the students and the staff and external resources so that we can allocate the necessary or proper resources to get them the help they need.
I'm going to talk about the behavioral health pillar and how this is so critical. I think back to my education, and one of my favorite counseling theorists always talked about that all behavior is purposeful, especially with students and kids, and it's up to us to figure out what that behavior is. And I think that's the perfect example when we talk about how oftentimes manifestation of a mental health concern or trauma, like how students express that, we might see just the tip of the iceberg, and we really don't understand everything that's going on below the surface and how criminalizing that or putting a kid in the juvenile justice system doesn't address and actually serve the student. And that's why it's critical that behavioral health is always at the front of our minds and why we do have social workers that can help and respond and that we're not putting officers in the position of being mental health experts. Like, they get trained highly on this, but that we do have experts within our department to be able to help with that.
And so the, the equity piece is, is another very, very important pillar to what we built here in Round Rock. And because the Round Rock ISD Police Department, what we do is we hire officers that recognize the importance of equity. And we only want officers who are able to stand up on that pillar and serve our students and staff and then end this district equitably. Because every student, and we all know that every student needs a fair chance to succeed because the experiences, the opportunities, and the chances to succeed for some have not always been equitable. And, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm a living witness of that at, from, from growing up in the experiences that I've had. I'm a living witness of that. But the beautiful thing about it is our officers understand that there's a difference between equality, saying I'm going to treat everyone the same, and equity. For example, we had an officer and one of the, when we asked him one of the questions during the interview, we asked him, what is the difference between equity, equality and equity? And his response was equality is giving every student a pair of shoes. Equity is giving every student a pair of shoes that fits. So we want officers to recognize that every student has different needs, and it is our responsibility to recognize what resources exist so that we can meet them at that need so that they can be the most successful that they possibly can. And in addition, we work closely with our chief equity officer to make sure that our decisions and our practices and procedures produce the most equitable outcomes for our students. In fact, in the very first week that he was here, Mr. Street met with our department and provided equity training that allowed our officers an opportunity to engage, collaborate, and discuss issues in a way that made everyone's voice feel valuable, everyone's experiences feel valuable. And that is an approach to equity work that recognizes diverse experiences and perspectives, which is exactly what we should be doing as police officers when we work in a district that has this diverse student population and student experiences that we serve. In fact, we have a summer educational project plan with the equity office that will help our officers understand the African-American experience. And we will use that project as a platform to catapult our department into more educational projects with the equity department that exposes us to many different races, cultures, and experiences in order to better understand why equity is vital to the success of school police. And so we've got the student advocacy piece. This is another very, very important pillar because our department has been established on this pillar, and we're not an agency that will, will move to, to criminalize juvenile reckless, irresponsible adolescent behavior. Our objective is to solve the issues at the lowest common denominator. And law enforcement is, is not that, that first go-to. And it should never be because, again, you create disproportionality. And you, and a lot, not to mention, many people don't realize that there are added hardships that exist for families that are already just struggling. And we don't want to be that type of agency. That's why we're a different law enforcement agency. And we were advocated by students who are face, facing criminal justice, the criminal justice system. For example, there are times when students may commit something that, for example, they may be using drugs and caught using drugs on campus. Historically, those were easy offenses to rest on. What we do now is we look at those situations as a student in crisis, and our goal is to get them the help that they need. For example, if we've got a student that's using drugs on campus or that, that's been caught using drugs, possessing drugs, we're looking at, is there an underlying issue that's causing them to turn to this? Are they self-medicating because they're addicted and they can't get over these things? So we utilize the resources that we have at our disposal in our social workers, in our district, and our external partners where we can provide them the resources to get them the help that they need. And people have heard me use an example, not directly aligned with our kids, speaking about our kids, but I've said before, you can catch the wolf that's been killing your chickens and lock him up in a cage. That solves your problem, but it doesn't help the wolf. And so our goal is making sure that we recognize how we can help our students because we don't want them to make a juvenile reckless decision as a, as a 16, 15, 14, 17-year-old kid that negatively impacts them for the rest of their life. So they will hear our offices advocating for them on their behalf to find alternate resources. And we, before I even started the department, we engaged in, in discussions with our law enforcement partners, our juvenile justice system, our juvenile prosecutors, to make sure that whoever was going to be the chief would have those systems already in place to where they can use those resources to help our kids instead of criminalizing. And, and we're very proud that the, the partners that we've talked to, they are all on board with diversionary programs that keep student and allowing us to use resources that keeps them out of the criminal justice system. And that is, that, so that summarizes our four pillars that we consider very important here in Round Rock ISD and our police department.
Okay, I'd like to give you an update on our partners. Round Rock ISD has had contracts with partnering agencies for as long as I can remember to provide services for safety and security for the district. As of, Austin Community College had a contract that expired in June of 2020. At this point, all of their officers were pulled out and sent back to their agencies to help their agency. There was other contracts with Round Rock PD and Williamson County Sheriff's Office that extended through June of 2021, which is basically two months from now. And they were contracted to provide services for our schools, but they were having issues with staffing for their own departments trying to cover the needs of the county and the city. So Chief Yarborough and I worked on early transitions with those partners to help them assist or help assist them with getting their needs covered. And we were able to onboard officers at a faster rate to get our schools covered. At this point, we have, Round Rock Police Department is fully pulled out as of March 2021. There's no more Round Rock officers. They have agreed with us to assist us with any needs we have. That was part of the agreement, and they have assisted us with some things, but they are fully out. At this point, Williamson County is down to two deputies on campuses. We have one with one of our officers at McNeil. So one Round Rock ISD and one Williamson County deputy at McNeil High School, excuse me, McNeil High School. And then we have one other deputy at Grisham Middle School. They will be fully out by June of 2021. I'm also going to speak about our current coverage. At this point, we have 22 officers, myself and Chief Yarborough. We've broken that down to patrol officers. We have sectors, three sectors, east, west, and central. And those were set up to best provide most appropriate response times to any incident that we needed to go to, whether we needed to go to a campus or, or whatever we needed to go to. It was set up by access to freeways, access to toll roads, things like that. Our patrol officers are going to be multifunctional. They're going to respond when we have needs at campuses that may require extra presence, like I talked about earlier. They will also, they're tasked with going to our elementary schools, which have historically not had coverage. They show up on a daily basis, and they go in to provide the same safety and security, but at a kind of a different level. They go in and they're, they're mentoring, and they're, they're building relationships with staff and with the kids at the school. It's been very productive. When they don't make it on a day, they're, they're very missed. Our high schools are all covered by at least one of our officers. As I said, McNeil has one deputy that will be transitioned out, but each of the high schools are covered by at least one. Cedar Ridge has two, McNeil has two for coverage, Round Rock two, Stony Point one, Westwood will have two, and the Opportunity Center will have one. All of our middle schools are also covered at this point with the exception, as I mentioned, Grisham Middle School, which has a deputy there, but that will be out by 2021. We don't see any issues with that.
I want to speak on our officer demographics. And I want, I want, I want to put this in context because I think it's very important, the way we started this process, when we said we were going to hire in this district, our goal was not to focus on anything but the officers that would best align with the vision, mission, values, and direction of this department, this district, and the needs of the community. We, we, we wanted to make sure that, that we weren't, we, we were completely objective in what we did because, and we realized, and when you look at this, and after we've, we've gone through and we started putting these numbers together, we're like, wow! It's absolutely amazing when you think about, because diversity is extremely important, especially when creating a police department that serves a diverse district like Round Rock ISD. But when you look at the hiring process, we have HR pre-screening. We have our department, we do a pre-screening. We have interviews, and we have an extensive background check. And there are officers that have made it through the interviews, and because of how stringent our background investigation is, they didn't make it through our background. They, they would have been, and, and they were great in their current departments. They were great in other districts and, and maybe great in other law enforcement areas. But for what we're looking for, they didn't quite meet those expectations because we're, we have the, we're very fortunate to be very selective. And if you look at our numbers compared to the, the US police officers, the, the national averages, when you look at the percentage of, of males nationwide, it's a high number, but here in Round Rock, we're lower than that number because our female population is higher. And that number is only going to go higher because we've got officers that are, that are in background investigation that are going to change these numbers even more. If you look at our, our, our female population, 29% of our department are female. And, and this was not by design. This was by an objective interview process. Our, our black, our African-American population doubles the national average. Our Hispanic population of officers, 33% of our department is Hispanic. 33% is white. 4% of our department is Asian. In fact, we're very proud, we, we had an Asian female officer who's going to be working in our department. She's got a wealth of experience, a degree from, from college, a university in Colorado. She's worked for the University of Texas at Austin for several years and a tremendous asset. We're very proud of the quality of officers that we're bringing into our district. And to show you how selective we've been, very fortunate to be, our selection rate is around 20%. Only 20% of the ops, and, and I think there's some, some, some colleges in this state, and one of them may be Texas A&amp;M, where it's easier to get in than it is to get into our department because we think that is, and, and, and I can say that because I went to A&amp;M. But I think it's very important for us to understand the value and the importance of making sure that we're hiring and we're extremely selective in our hiring practices. And over 50% of our officers are certified mental health officers. Over 80% of our officers have college degrees. And I read a, a report from the, from Houston Police Department back in 2018 that they reached, and they were very proud of the report that they put out. They said, for the first time in the history of our department, we reached over 66% of our officers with a, with a degree. We've got over 80% of our officers with a degree, and we're about seven months old. I, I think that's a great start. And, and, and four of our officers, including me, are crisis negotiator, are hostage negotiators. And if we ever need that resource, we have the skill sets to perform that. Officers are also basic and advanced NASRO-trained officers, and we have officers that are both advanced and masterpiece officers. And the quality and the number is, is very high for a department. And we're very proud of the, the quality and the experience that we've been able to bring into this department. Also seeing officers in action. We've created a professional standards division in our department so that we can make sure that we're attaining the highest level of training possible. We have officers in our department who are, are, that have, that are, that are certified T-CO instructors who are active shooter, threat mitigation, response officers, and trained and have high levels of training in many different areas. And they're going to be responsible for providing in-house training to our department to raise the standards. And we're, we're really excited about having that as a, as a, a division in our department. AIT is something that, that is very, very, that we're very proud of. And you see Officer Bush on the screen. At, at Hernandez Middle School, he created a group called All In Together. And he brings students together every other Thursday, and he sits down and he has conversations with the students. And I've attended those meetings, and I'm absolutely proud of the engagement and the discussions that they have and how they talk about, if you're being bullied, what are some of your resources? How do you feel about that? And what do you, you know, what do you want to do as opposed to what is the right thing to do? And getting office, and getting these students to engage in these discussions with the officer, it, it's very, very eye-opening. And even in that situation, we've had students who have expressed issues to Officer Bush that have actually allowed us to get our, our social workers involved to provide ongoing resources and support to those students. So it's, it's, it's something that we are very proud of. In addition, we've got officers that, an officer that is creating a district-wide mentoring process so that all, all schools and campuses that have officers are aligned to provide those services. Ridge View is, is chomping at the bits to start their junior explorer program, and we're excited about that. We also have an officer who is, and, and our social workers who are teamed together to provide peer support for our officers because there are situations officers deal with, and they need to have that support and that, that resource. And we utilize that very well here in our department, our district. Standard response protocols and standard reunification methods. Officers have gone through the training, the training program where they can actually train, facilitate, and provide that oversight for our campuses so that when we're going through our lockdown, lockout, evacuation shelter, and hold drills, and the standard of unification, working with our, our social workers and our nurses, that everything's aligned and consistent with best practices. Engage in community. We're very proud of, of our ability and our desire to be transparent and to engage in our community, answer the questions that we, that our community may have. We're engaged on a, in a community level, a district level. And if you look at some of the things that we've done on the, in the community level, we've met with many different groups, including CPAC, our pastors lunches, where I've attended, our chamber. I just spoke at Rotary last week. Not only are we stopping, we're not, we're not just stopping there. We, even in our PTA groups, we've had many different opportunities to speak to many diverse PTAs and explain to them who we are and to bring in members from different groups so that we can learn more about cultures and experiences and historical celebrations so that our officers understand who we're serving and how to best align with the diversity that we have here. Like I said, not only are we proud, proud of the community and district engagement that we have, but we're also heavily engaged in state engagement. In fact, tomorrow, I'm speaking at Region Four Safety Center. That's the Houston area, speaking to them on redefining the school policing and talking about how we're approaching that through diversity or equity, diversity, inclusion, and behavioral health. I was invited to speak, and, and that's tentative of schedule. I was very proud to be contacted, asked if I would be willing to speak at the, the Texas NAACP Conference when it comes up. And I'm hoping that that goes through because I'm really excited about that. I've got a presentation Thursday at TAG ITM, which is a IT safety conference. Dr. Grasso and I have spoken at TASCASB, TASCAMidwinter, and we're continuing to be available because we're very proud of what we're doing here in Round Rock when it comes to the model that we have. I'm also going to be speaking at the National School Safety Center Conference that's being held in the, the city of New Orleans. And a lot of these, what we're very proud, and, and also the National School Facilities Safety Conference, a lot of these state and national engagements where we're able to engage in dialogue with people from around the country, we haven't even been, we, we didn't even offer a lot of these. We were invited to speak, like, for example, the National School Facilities and Safety Conference. They reached out to us and asked if we would be willing to speak there. And I'm excited about the opportunities and letting people know what we're doing here in Round Rock because it's different, it's, it's rare, and it is going to be the model for school policing. We have no doubt.
And I'll talk a minute about, a little bit about collaboration and discipline. What, there, there's sometimes some misunderstanding that the police department's involved in discipline. I want to assure you, we are not. I'll say it again, we are not involved in discipline. That's not our role. Administration deals with discipline issues. Law enforcement deals with criminal activity issues. But sometimes those two overlap, as you can imagine. And I'll give you a couple of examples. One would be an electronic cigarette or an e-sig. You have to be 21 to have it. You can't have it on campus. It gets reported to the admin. They bring the student in, they search or whatever they do, they, they locate that. They will call our officers to respond because it is a criminal issue to have it. What we're doing, unlike a traditional law enforcement agency, is it's easier just to write a citation and move on. What we're doing is we're there to advocate for that student. We're going to take the time to find out what is going on with that student, get people involved, get resources involved. What can we do to help with that situation other than just writing a citation, putting them in the system? Can we get in touch with the parents? Can we do some training, things like that? Another one would be a fight. You have a fight at school, two kids get upset with each other, they have a fight. No injuries, but it still is an offense. It's disorder of conduct fighting. And what we want to do is be involved in that, make sure everybody works it out. There's no problems, answer any questions, get the parents involved, anything we can do to assist. But our role is to advocate for the student, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to push it back to the admin. Let them handle at the lowest common denominator. That's one of Chief's big things that he says over and over and over and over to all of our officers. We are going to push to the lowest common denominator. We're going to look to see what is best for that student.
And I want to speak really quick about the accountability. Some people think that there, you know, there's, there's little accountability for police officers and police departments. Well, I want to explain to you, particularly even in this school district, how the, the accountability pieces that exist in our, in that, that we as a police department are accountable to. Of course, the, the Round Rock's Board of Trustees, we're accountable to the Board of Trustees, making sure that, that what we're doing as a department aligns with the vision, mission, and direction of this district and making sure that we're, we're serving the best, meeting the best outcomes and serving the best need, the most important needs of our kids, making sure that our kids come first. And so if we're not doing that, we're going to be held accountable, rightfully so. The same goes with the superintendent. Whoever the superintendent is, we have, we are accountable there. So if there are things that are not occurring, we are, we're accountable there. The, the Round Rock ISD Equity, Chief Equity Officer and his department, we're accountable there. If there are systems that are creating disproportionality in the outcomes that our department are engaged in, not that we ever, we're, we're going to do that, but if those things did, were occurring, his, his department has a responsibility to look into those things, to launch an investigation into those, those, those concerns and to address those things appropriately. And some people think, well, that's fine, but, but what about crimes that? Well, here's the thing. The District Attorney's Office, is there, if a law enforcement officer commits an offense, rest assured, any officer that's accused of committing a criminal offense, our department will not investigate those. Those things will be turned over to the appropriate jurisdictions, and the District Attorney's Office is an option for, for reaching out to them if you, if someone feels like a criminal offense has been occurred, has occurred or been committed by our department. The same with the County Attorney's Office. The Attorney General's Office is another resource. When I worked with the AG's office, I investigated and arrested many law enforcement individuals. The FBI, people think that there is a violation of a person's civil rights, then the FBI is a resource, DPS is a resource, T-CO is a resource. T-CO, in fact, Dr. Presley mentioned that T-CO came in and they did an audit last week. They do these audits unannounced. We don't know when. They may do two in one year, they may do six in one year, they may do one every other year. We don't know. But they did theirs, and like I said, we're about seven months old. They did theirs a few weeks ago. And this audit, what they wanted to look at were our hiring practices. And they go through a checklist. They want to make sure that we're, our officers, if they've been out of law enforcement for more than 180 days, they've done their physical, they've done their, their drugs, their psychological, they've done their, their drug screening. They want to make sure that when we do our, when they do their fingerprints before we hire them, that, that those fingerprints haven't been rejected. They want to make sure that everything in that file aligns, and they want to make sure that, that our hiring practices are consistent with the state requirements, T-CO requirements, and above all, our expectations of our officers. So ultimately, you can actually leave there. So any deficiency they find, they will give you a letter saying this was a deficient. You can literally have a deficiency for not quali, having an officer qualify with weapons before they even start with your agency. That can be a deficiency. Or you can have several dozen, and you may be able to go to 100 deficiencies, depending on how bad you are. T-CO spent five hours with our agent. T-CO spent five hours with our agency last week. And when they finished it, the outcomes were zero deficiencies for our department because we take pride in what we do. This is not a game for us. Our goal is to make sure that we are setting the bar as high as possible so that, that our community takes note of, of the value of what we do. Our peers take note of what we're doing and people see that we're not just any other police department. We're serious about what we do and we're, and our kids come first. Our goal is to make sure we're doing everything to meet the needs of our, our, our students, our staff and our community.
I want to talk a little bit more about accountability and where we're headed, starting next year. As you recall, when Chief, Assistant Chief Willoughby was talking, it's been a slow gradual of Round Rock PD pulling out and WILCO pulling out. So this is the framework we'll go with starting next year. The reporting that I will work with our research and evaluation with Dr. Malerba and how we can gather the data and report accurately and making sure we break those down by demographics and student groups. And so we can see where we're landing. It's also important to know that we're required, the officers are required to do a racial profiling report to Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and FBI National Incident Based Reporting System. And those reports also can be used as the Board of Trustees. We will start an advisory group for policing. And this is going to be made up of parents and subject matter experts, it's going to be facilitated by the Chief Equity Officer. And it'll meet every other month and we're going to review data on police interactions. And I need to say that we'll also be doing this in, with the highest regards, looking at what we're bound by, by FERPA, HIPAA and also personnel matters regarding officers or district employees. But we think it's really important that we have this advisory group so that we're continually improving, right? That I think accountability, a lot of times we think is just like checkmarks. But really for me, it's how does that then implement how we train, what better procedures do we have? So we're constantly evolving and doing better. I want to remind people that the complaint process for any officer is up on the website and that that part of that process is the Board of Trustees. And the last is audit and there's a lot of different ways that the department is audited. The first is the one that Chief just mentioned with T-CO. There's also some from DPS. And also we will, as a department, every year request an internal, an audit by our internal audit department just to make sure we're, where we want to be and where are areas of improvement. And so like I said, that will be fully implemented starting next year. I had the opportunity to talk with, with a few of you this last month on Behavioral Health Services. So I'm just going to hit it really quickly, but I'm really proud of the work that's been happening. And so this is just by the numbers and few highlights. We have one social worker that's been trained to deliver trauma informed care and has already started provided that training for our school counselors. We have three, three social workers who are, have been trained to be mental health first aid youth trainers. And that's from PTA gave us the funds to do that. And while we can have that provided by Integral Gear or Blue Bonnet Trails, we found that it helps to have a district employee do some of that training too, because we knows our processes, our protocols. And so we can integrate that into that training. So we're really excited to be able to provide more of that for our staff. We have 195 students that have been served through CARRY for Great Kids, which that's a middle school program we contracted for this year. We've had 300 students refer to our mental health centers throughout this school year. And we've had 512 students refer to our, our social worker team as of yesterday. And I want to break that down a little more of what those referrals look like. And to remind you that the social workers, the first five we had onboarded in November and the next five didn't come in January. So if you look at our numbers, we went from 158 referrals on January 13th to that 512. So I think we definitely have seen that we are meeting a need and that there clearly was a need for the social workers. They're divided up to per learning community, two are bilingual, so are able to serve our families who speak Spanish. And that has been beyond our resource and really excited that they are able to connect with families on a level that they wouldn't have been if they weren't, if we didn't have social workers speaking Spanish. Chief, I know we're getting short on time, do we want to go to questions first and then the case studies or?
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me.
Okay, I'm going to stop hearing then real quick. So if any of you all have questions.
I see Trustee Weston has her hand up and then Trustee Feller.
Can you hear me, President Weir? Okay, thank you. So I really appreciate this meeting today and I'll say that Mr. Yarborough, I've listened to lots of briefings that you've given. You know, I was there at all of the Safety Security Task Force meetings. Sometimes I was the only member of the community present for those meetings. And I've had what I would call a healthy level of skepticism of this enterprise. And I am the daughter of a law enforcement officer, but I will say that I've heard some new information today. I want to highlight your words on the efforts of your officers to engage the community. And I really appreciate that. And I just want everybody here to know that I'm moving forward with an open mind now as an elected trustee. I do have a couple of open ended questions, if you could help me understand. Can we talk about facilities? So I kind of have been hearing that maybe there's not the facilities that the officers may need for their office space. That may be a need on their horizon, I don't know, can you clarify? You, well, hold on, if you and Mr. Willoughby can also, like, are you, are you in offices on Round Rock ISD property currently? Do your officers have adequate office space? So where are you now and what do you, and not, I don't need 10 minutes here, but like, what might we expect to that? And, and then after that, I have another question.
Sure. Too soon, Trustee Weston, but I was, I've been watching this now for, ever since we started developing our department. There is a need to have a place for our police and our behavioral health folks to go. As most of you know, we're out of space here at Central Office. Chief Yarborough and Assistant Chief Willoughby share an office right now, which isn't ideal. If they're not, they're, most of the time they're out in the community, but when they're here, they're both in there, in one office together, which isn't a great setup. Our police records specialist that we were required to hi, hire by T-CO and have is now housing in the superintendent's suite. Because I'm the acting superintendent and I'm staying in my office, I'm not occupying the superintendent's office. We put them there just for now because they have to have a place behind a locked door. They can't be in a cubicle or anywhere else. And so overall, we're kind of out of space. And, and the reason I spoke up is because there's a capital project, on the capital projects list, one of the proposals that you'll see coming forward that we've talked about a little bit before is converting the dental office that we bought across the street from Round Rock High School into a behavioral health and police headquarters. It's, so I've got, I'll get some numbers to you again on what it would cost to convert that. It's basically just renovating, it's a 25 year old building, but it is a building that we own. I know some members of the community, you know, alleged that we would build a Taj Mahal for a police department like some districts have. And that's not the case at all, but we do need more space. And I'm not speaking for Chief Yarborough, but I think our officers, because we've had SROs on our campuses at middle schools and high schools for a while, they have a place to be. Our patrol officers that frequent our elementary schools don't need a place to nest on those campuses. But some of our principals have actually created spots for them to sit down and do reports in the library or whatever while they're visiting. So the need on campuses doesn't exist as much as it does centrally. Dr. Grosso's office is a meeting room that was converted. And so she's always meeting with her, her mental health folks, her social workers in there. So what we have is not ideal, we have the capacity to possibly do something. There is a cost associated with that as far as the renovation of the building, but we'd have a building that we own. And Chief Yarborough, I didn't mean to speak over you, but I'll let you add anything you want to add.
Well, if actually, I appreciate that, Dr. Presley. So Chief Yarborough and Officer Willoughby, are you guys on school property now in makeshift offices?
We're actually in central admin and our offices are just, just out the back door. We're, they have goals in the 100, 300 area of Round Rock High School.
But on this, on this call right now, are you guys on Round Rock ISD property?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that and I guess you are too as well, Dr. Grosso. Okay, I appreciate that. And then my, my next question, I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I'll, I'll just stop after this one and I'll open it up to my colleagues. Can you guys, Officer Willoughby and, or Officer Yarborough, can you explain the limits of your authority? I already understand what the limits of the authority of any law enforcement agency is. But can you clarify for the community that when it comes to any sort of school district policies, to include policies codified by the administration, policies codified by the school board, the elected school board, that your, your authority is limited to the penal code and what other, whatever else those limitations are? And can you provide that clarity for our community, please? Thank you.
That, you're, you're absolutely correct, Trustee Weston. Some people think that we have all, all, all power and authority in our hands and that is absolutely not true. We're, we're, our jurisdiction and our authority is limited by the Texas, the Texas Penal Code, the Code of Criminal Procedures. We have Health and Safety Code, you have traffic laws and things of that nature. But, but going and trying to enforce a dress code, we don't have the authority. It, it's no different than someone to, to, even for example, you get two people in the community, a husband and wife are into it and they say, well, I want him to leave. And we're like, we have no authority, it's a civil matter. And so there are many offenses that people think that we have, we have the say in and we simply don't. And, and the same rule applies when it comes to enforcing board policies, student code of conduct, issues and concerns. And that's why, again, our scope is solving it at the least common denominator and officers keeping the law enforcement arm and hand and fingers out of everything where we don't have standing.
Trustee Feller, you had a question?
If I can, if I can add something real quick, President Weir, I think, and I don't, I don't want to be, the, the fact that we are on this, and I'm in my office, everyone on this call is in an office by themselves with the door closed, which is allowed by district policy to not wear a mask if you're by yourself in your office. So that was, if we're trying to identify where everybody's located, ask, you know, if we're on district property, we are on district property. And this isn't a mass discussion, but I just want to point that out that everyone on the call.
We aren't posted for that, Dr. Presley, I'm going to go ahead and let Trustee Feller ask her question, please.
I'm going to keep it brief just to say thank you, but just a quick clarification on slide four. Early College High School was not mentioned. Do we have an officer located at Early College High School?
We don't have an officer located there at this, at this time. What we do is our patrol officers patrol that, but they have an officer on, in fact, they have a couple of officers on site there. And they are, because we're on that property, they provide that security, the, the, the general patrol. And if there's an incident or, or a need for law enforcement response, we're the ones that they are called.
So when you say the officers on site, you mean the ACC officers that are patrolling the rest of their property?
Yes, that's correct.
Even though ACC is out of Round Rock ISD, they are still providing a little bit of support since we are on their, their property?
Yes, they have, they have jurisdiction of, of that campus. And so anything that happens on that campus, even ideally, in, interestingly, if something happened at Early College High School, they have the jurisdiction to handle that. But because we are our own law enforcement agency and we have the MOU with, the memorandum of, of understanding with an agency with overlapping jurisdiction, because we have that, they know to contact us. They may, they'll stand there and wait and hold the scene until we get there and then we handle it. Because we do have that overlapping jurisdiction.
Okay, thanks for the clarification on that. And I know we're in the beginning phases of starting to plan for an actual facility for Early College. So in the future, once we have an independent facility, I think the land has been given to us by ACC. Would that still remain the case that they maintain eminent domain over that or how would that work as we move forward?
I would say that's something we can explore, but right now ACC provides security for their camps. And even with the land that we'll have there or the building we'll construct for Early College High School will still be on the ACC campus. So that's a resource we can look at in the future, we feel like we need an additional person. But right now ACC provides security for that venue.
Okay, thanks for the clarification on that one.
You're welcome.
Can I just ask a quick question about on slide 11, the complaint process? Because I just, I pulled it up while you were talking and, and it, the complaint actually requires a notary, which, not that I expect we have a lot of complaints, but I mean, that's, that is maybe hard for some people to go and do. And then it says that it goes then to the Board of Trustees, but I don't actually, I don't actually know how that works. And it's not really listed as part of the complaint process if someone were to want to bring it to before the board? Is that just the regular grievance and complaint process?
Yes, so when it, when it talks about the notary, it, 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 it doesn't have to be notarized. It says, you know, it can be, but it doesn't have, doesn't necessarily have to be. But what we've done is we've created a, an avenue for someone, if they had a complaint that they wanted to file. And again, the goal is to have it solved at the least common denominator. I mean, you start with that, that officer supervisor. And if it doesn't, if that doesn't address it, it can go to the Assistant Chief me or it can go to the superintendent. And if that doesn't, if that doesn't work, then our goal is to make sure that it, it does, it does a seamless on-ramp into the district's grievance process.
Okay, well, I guess, I know that right now Trustees Vessa and Harrison are kind of working on revamping some of that. So I guess that's just maybe to trustee Vessa to put that in the back of your mind to make sure that we're consistent across all of the complaint processes so that it is, everyone understands what they are.
Yes, and, and we're very, we're very open and, 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 and available to work to make sure that, that any gaps that may exist in it, that, that they seamlessly integrate. So that we're, we're making sure that our, our community, if they want to file a complaint against any officer, that we're creating an avenue to where it's, it's easy. If someone looks at, at our complaint process and says, well, why don't you cut out three steps? And we look at, that makes sense and it's legal, then we're going to do that. I mean, we're not married to any position, only just making it the best that we possibly can be. Because if we find things that are, that are effective, then it may help other districts do the same.
I appreciate that, thank you. Are there any other questions right now, trustees? Oh, Trustee Jiao.
I just have a quick comment as a parent, Officer Pope at Canada Middle School. Every kid, every staff love him, he's funny. I, well, really, it's really fortunate to have him, thank you.
Yes, sir. We're very proud to have him as well. And all of the offices that we have, we're, we're, we're very thankful for their commitment and dedication to, to setting the standards so far above where it's, where, where law enforcement perceives it and seeing that it's, you have to have a different mindset. And, and, and he has those intangibles that, that, that have helped other officers that are coming on board to see the direction that we're going. So he's been really, really good working with our staff and our, and our community and our students as well, so we're proud of him too.
So trustee, I know it's almost one and I do want to be respectful, I know it's lunch hour for people that work. There is one more slide on the case studies. If it's okay, we'll go ahead and just finish those up.
I say we just do one and we'll let Dr. Grosso do a case study example.
We just wanted to talk about like how our model, how it's played out compared to a traditional SRO program or no police on campus at all. And it was a situation that happened last semester, an officer got called to a campus, a student was having some major behavior concerns and even making threats to his, his family. And so as soon as, as the officer was headed over there, she called me and said, can a social worker please meet me over there? Knowing that it was a mental health concern and that we needed a team approach. So they got there and the, the parent was there, the parent had tried to get the student in patient care previously. And by the time they got to inpatient mental health care, the crisis was avert, like the crisis was gone, so they would never admit it. But the student was never getting the help they need. So what happened was the officer transported the kid, social worker went along, mom went along and they went to where they knew there was a bed available to get the student in patient care. They got there, they said they wouldn't admit him because he didn't have a negative COVID test. And so it then was probably a two hour long process of what, how we're going to get the student help. It took in total four to five hours that day, a team of social workers, a group of officers, problem solving the case until we did get the student into another hospital and he was able to get the services he needed. I asked Chief AC, many of our officers, what would have happened if we didn't have this approach? And they said, a traditional SRO program or even they didn't have social workers, it would have turned out way different because they didn't have that resource. Or if it would have been, we didn't have police on campus and we had to call whoever had jurisdiction and the officers in that area. After they got to the first hospital and they wouldn't take him because there wasn't a negative COVID test. At that point, he wasn't in crisis, they would have given him back to his parents and the student would never receive services. Happy to report the student got the services they needed. The officer, he says, is still his best friend. And she checks in with him regular, but also the social worker was able to continue to provide services for the family. And I think that's just one instance of how it's all coming together and how we do take the time as a complete team to make sure all of our students and families. In that situation, it's really scary for a family and they don't know. If you're not familiar with the process, it can be really overwhelming. And so how the social workers can really walk through that with our families to make a scary process as least scary as possible.
Dr. Grosso, can you tell them in, in 10? Dr. Grosso, can you tell them in in ten seconds what uh the student did over Christmas?
He had the officer's um work cell phone number because she had given the family work number. He called the officer on Christmas Day and first was surprised she answered and said he just wanted to tell her Merry Christmas because of how important she was to him. And so I think those are the kind of relationships that are able to form and make me very proud to do the work I'm doing um today. I never imagined this is where my career would be, but every day I see examples like this and um I could not be prouder to be doing this work.
Thank you. That that is, that's, that's awesome news. It is great to hear. And thank you all for all that you're doing for our students right now. It is a tough time. And I think as we move into the fall, it's still going to be a tough time. So um I appreciate that you're able to do that. Are there any last questions, trustees? Trustee Weston?
Just real quick, um Chief Yarborough, do you think twenty-two officers is the right number? Do you think that's the, uh, can you just briefly your thoughts on the staffing level?
Yes, our goal is 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 thirty-one. And the reason we 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 want it thirty-one is because thirty-one provides us the the historical coverage that we've had, one at each middle school, one at each, or two at each high school. But it also, and and the Round Rock Opportunity Center, but it also provides us two patrol officers each sector. And that way that they can respond and we not having to pull officers off the campuses to go and respond to calls for services at the elementary schools. So uh thirty-one is what we feel is a good starting point. Um, and we're, we're able to see what our needs are and um and to provide those services, the basic functions that we need. And I say basic, but to be, still be effective, I think thirty-one is a good number.
I don't see any other trustee hands. Well, thank you so much for your presentation.